We'll call to order the August 23 meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board. I'm not going to read the Zoom thing. I think everyone has it by now. So our first item on the agenda is public input.
Hi, I just have some public input on the MBTA community thing. One of my strong things is that I believe that this is too big of an issue to have just a few people decide it. I am in the middle of getting petition signed to bring to the Select Board to act that this question be put on the ballot for every single Chelmsford resident to decide. I think every resident in the town of Chelmsford should vote on whether or not we should comply with the state as it's going to affect every single resident in the town. It's too big of an issue to be decided by just the, okay now I'm losing my thought here, town meeting reps. It should be decided by every resident in this town. And everybody that I've spoken to so far, I've got 65 signatures so far, and everyone I've spoken to so far agrees with me that it's too big of an issue to be decided by just a few, that we should all decide this. So I'm just letting you know that I'm still fighting this MBTA community thing. I don't think it's a good fit for Chelmsford. I don't think it's right for Chelmsford. We're at capacity already with our sewerage. Our schools are at capacity. This is just not a good fit for Chelmsford. I mean, as much as we're going to lose supposedly funding, it's going to cost us more in taxes for schools, for police, for fire, for roads. The traffic is going to increase. It's just, it's just not a good fit. I'm just letting you know that I am getting a petition signed. I'm going to bring it to the Select Board on the 11th, and I'm going to ask them to please put it on the ballot so that we can all decide on this, not just a few.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else for public input? Online?
No.
Okay. We have nothing for administrative review. We have a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment to amend the Town Code, Chapter 195 zoning bylaw by amending Section 195-5 permitted uses and Attachment 1 use regulation schedule for the purpose of inserting adult daycare facility and amending the existing definition of adult daycare facility per Section 195-108, amending the Planning Board's site plan and special permit rules and regulations and policies and procedures for the purpose of updating these documents.
Just for clarification, I included the rules and regs and procedures simply because it saves $600.
It saves $600?
Yeah, anytime you put a legal ad in the little sun, it's a minimum of $600. I just combined these three items, knowing that we can open the hearing tonight and continue those indefinitely.
Gotcha.
Tonight's public hearing is targeted for the proposal.
Adult daycare.
Yep.
And just for, for purpose of clarification, it's my understanding that the revisions that are being proposed are actually, we're replacing some language that was likely erroneously removed on a prior revision of the relevant chapter, correct? Is everyone in accord with that as a statement of the event? Okay. So do we want to have any discussion about these changes?
Looks like a slam dunk to me.
I just want to clarify that the statement mentioned that we're changing the definition and the use table, and I think we mentioned at the last meeting, we're only changing the use table. We're not adjusting the definition, correct?
Right, the question having been whether or not people could sleep there, right? And we're not letting it be that people can sleep there, is that right? Okay.
I mean, we can always revisit later.
Does it say that?
Well, the definition, the term says daycare, and based on the definitions I looked up, daycare means it's a day period only. So I think we'd mentioned that we weren't seeing a need to change the definition at the last meeting.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm very much agree too.
Okay. Do we need to continue this? I'm sorry, do we continue this open?
If the, if the board has enough information and you feel as though you can close, then you should. That way you can make a clean recommendation as part of the Select Board signing of the warrant on September 11th, and you do not meet between now and then. If you choose to keep it open, which you certainly can, then you'll have to give some indication that what is on the screen is what the board is comfortable with to be included in the signing of the warrant. Are you taking any public comment on this?
It is, if there's anybody to speak. I mean, it has been properly noticed.
Take a motion to open the public hearing?
I will move so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on the matter in public hearing?
I have some questions because I'm confused about this adult daycare. Because I got the paper that was up there that was written with the definitions, and it's stating what was in the bookstore and about the live entertainment and stuff like that. It was up on the board. I took it right from the board, and then I went online onto your site, and I turned off the site.
Right.
Is that something that's like, I don't know, something that got misplaced in there?
Those are other definitions in that.
It says adult bookstore, an establishment having a substantial or significant portion of stock and trade.
Those are definitions. That's a list of definitions.
Yes.
That we're not changing.
Okay.
We're just presenting the list of definitions.
So this is a sexual, well, that's what this is saying!
No, it's giving a list of definitions, one of which is adult daycare and one of which is adult bookstore.
Another one is accessory.
Okay, I get you.
Those are the uses defined.
That's what I mean, that's why I was confused. I'm looking at it going, what? Okay, so it's just adult daycare and everything down below it and above it is not.
Relevant.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Sure.
I get confused.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay.
No one online.
All right.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a, did you want to speak?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay. I love a motion to vote.
You have to vote on closing, you have to take a vote on the closing.
Aye.
Aye.
All of you.
Oh, sorry, aye. Thank you. Okay.
Would you want to take a motion to recommend? Yeah, that's what I would. Before we do that, in order to make it clear at town meeting, do we want to change the language of what we're proposing for that article to not include anything about the definition?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that it only includes.
Or definition that we're not changing.
Because if we mention the definition,
Yeah, people are going to get confused.
People are going to ask what we're changing, and we're not changing anything.
Yep.
So the motion, or the article, should only talk about the table, the use table.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I'll, I'll move to that we approve it.
Making a recommendation at town.
Make a recommendation, yeah.
So I want to make a recommendation to town meeting. And what are we saying? What is the warrant article without, that making recommendation to town meeting to update?
Use schedule.
The use regulation schedule as presented.
Yeah.
And should we call out what the change is? No?
Okay, what is, what are the change?
I mean, do we have that right now? Was this in, this wasn't even in the schedule?
Correct.
So we're adding all those categories?
Inserting adult daycare.
We're inserting.
Adult daycare facility.
You're right.
As line item D 37.
Where it previously was, but it was removed because we thought a different, someone thought a different.
Yeah, it was removed back in 2011.
A different regulation included this, but it doesn't.
And we also changed the ZBA approval to Planning Board approval.
At that point.
Okay, so I want to remake the motion. So I'm making a motion to insert line 37 on the use regulation schedule for adult daycare as presented. For recommendation to town meeting. Anything else I need to add?
No.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're all here.
Are we, but are we all here?
That is a.
Another question.
Philosophical question I don't have the answer to.
Okay.
Okay. So next up, we have a discussion pertaining to a citizen's petition for a zoning article.
Yeah, I'm going to step out for this one because I have a business partner that lives in that area.
And I'm here speaking for Mike Smith. All right, Nancy Arrowway, 65 Littleton Road. I'm here representing Mike Smith. Mike asked me to do the research and put this together, so I'm speaking to the data. This proposal was put in place because the folks on Littleton Road are having difficulties with improving their properties and being able to reinvest in their properties because the current zoning just doesn't match what's on the ground. We've, the Planning Board has had discussions about mismatches in the past, and this is one of those areas that are mismatched. This is a center village neighborhood. It is a neighborhood of primarily older homes, and it's heavily stressed by truck traffic. The, in order to maintain viability, we're asking for, to rezone it from RC to RB. For the folks at home, these are both purely residential zoning districts. RB, which is the current zone, is a low-density, single-family residence district. And RC, which is being requested, is a medium-density, general residence district. The significant difference in terms of things that are permitted is that two-family dwellings are permitted in RC, but not in RB. I provided you in the, in the warrant article, the list of the property numbers and the addresses, and I've provided you tonight with a map of those properties. The properties extend from the cemetery and Gingerail Plaza toward Westford to the Lime Quarry and the swamps. So it's that stretch of 35 properties, mostly residential properties. We do have one commercial property in there and one multi-use property in there. So this area was developed primarily in the 1890s. It was developed as a village. The lot sizes range from about 7,400 square feet to 6,500 square feet. The average lot size in the area is 23,900 square feet. 40,000 is required for the current zoning. 11% of the properties currently conform to the current zoning. 11% isn't much. 57% would conform to the size requirements for RC, which is being requested. It's not great, but it's an improvement. This change would eliminate the legal fees and the unknown approval status when people try to modify their properties and add on in the future. In terms of frontage, again, it was developed as a village. 100% of the properties are non-conforming to the frontage requirements for the current zoning. Not a single one complies. The average frontage is approximately 106 feet, while the required RB frontage is 250. It's about 40% of the requirement. Of the 35 residential properties, only 7 or 20% would conform to the required frontage for RC. Not much improvement, but it helps.
How much, 20%?
20% would meet RC. What I'm really saying here is we need a new zoning category for village properties. Since that takes way too long to try to get, we're asking for an improvement that will help us over the next few years. We have two empty lots in this area. They are both appended to other lots. They each have about 75 feet of frontage, which is higher than 20% of the currently built-out lots on the street. Proposed zoning changes does not improve those frontage issues. They still have to be resolved by the ZBA if anybody wants to do anything, and they would really be solved with a zoning, a village residential zoning category. In terms of single-family versus two-family, 74%, three-quarters of the properties, residential properties on this street, qualify for conversion of dwellings with a special permit from the ZBA. They're old enough, they're 1938 or older. These are properties that were typically built with servant quarters. They were basically two families to begin with, but one of those was a very minimal apartment. 20% of the properties on the street are already two-family properties. They've already been converted over. And this would eliminate all the legal fees and the special permits and the unknowns for anybody that wanted to re-convert. And I've already talked about the undeveloped lot land. There's, there's two appendage lots that would qualify in space in terms of the acreage under RB, but would still require special permits because of the frontage. So that's what it's about. This street isn't a lot different than, than a lot of our village streets, our in-village streets. They were developed long ago. They have old houses. They are expensive to maintain. They're expensive to bring up to current standards, and people are looking for ways to make that affordable. The zoning that we've put on them in terms of RC zoning, or RB zoning, for low-density zoning in what's already a village and was typically built out on a 10, 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lot, makes it virtually impossible for them to go forward with investments. So that's my introduction. Questions?
So Nancy, do you, is the neighborhood afraid of buildings being taken down and putting up duplexes?
I can't say that they are. What they're really afraid of is the neighborhood being converted to commercial.
Yeah.
Because we're such, such a high-traffic neighborhood, and, and we're really trying to maintain, maintain our neighborhood, maintain our people. But, you know, we're all aging, and we're looking for ways to do that.
I mean, that is an entrance way into the city from, from Westford.
Yeah.
And that's where you see coming down the road, the homes. And I would hate, I personally, I mean, I like the idea at first, but I'm thinking about it as, I don't want it to turn into what's happening up on Route 40, where they're taking the homes down and they're putting duplexes up.
Yeah.
And, and then it's all these modern duplexes. And I don't know, so that's something that we just have to think about as a board when making this recommendation, or?
Yeah, so keep, keep in mind, Mike, that 75% of these properties qualify, age-wise, to be converted to two-families.
Right.
Right.
And they're big enough.
And they're big, they're big houses. You know, they're special permit.
Right.
But they are, in a lot of cases, it makes sense for them to be two-families because of the size of them.
Right.
That doesn't mean tearing them down. That means locking a door between the front and the back because they were originally built that way.
But RC, to your point, I mean, just so, when I first read this, the first thing I thought of was Route 40. I'm like, this is another Route 40. And so converting it to an RC and taking away the special permit doesn't, like, then we go down the same situation as Route 40, and that's my biggest fear, tear down and.
Well, we'd still have to deal with the, they still have to require to the, the size of the lots.
That's right.
For a duplex. A lot of them are Route 40, they do meet the size of the lots, but it's changing the look of the neighborhood. So that's just, that's the only thing I look at is coming down from the west, it could change. I just, I'm looking at, okay, we approve this now, what, what, what happens five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now? What's it look like? How different is this than the Westlands, where none of the properties in the Westlands meet their current, the RB?
It's, it's a problem all over town.
You know, no, I know that.
Yeah, it's, it's an absolute problem all over town because back in the 60s, we rejigged the zoning requirements to make big lots bigger than had been built on in God knows how long in order to stop, stop building.
Right.
And, but we're left with, you know, everything that was built before that now is on non-conforming lots. Because, you know, we didn't put in an exemption that says anything that's already built out doesn't have to meet this.
Right.
It's not grandfathered, you know? So any kind of improvements that you're trying to make because, you know, it was built as a village, thank you. It was not built as low-density, one-acre lots. And, and we have a number of areas in town that are like this. But this particular one is asking for help because it is truly stressed. We have, we have the asphalt plant at the other end of the road, and I can't tell you how much noise from 5:00 AM until midnight those trucks make.
So Nancy, to that point, you mentioned the, the truck traffic. How does this change in zoning address the trucks?
It doesn't. All I'm saying is this is a stressed neighborhood. This is a very stressed neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of older houses. 75% is before, were built before 38. Most of the rest, not all, there's one or two that are relatively modern, 60s, you know? But most of the rest are post-war, little, little post-war houses.
And you also mentioned that a lot of the neighbors are concerned about the change to commercial.
Very much. They're terrified by it.
But how would this change be any more protection of that than where it is now?
It makes it more viable to keep it residential, to, to maintain the residential use.
But if it's zoned for residential, the developers wouldn't be able to come in and change it to commercial?
Unless they go to the ZBA. I mean, we've, we've already got two commercial properties on that street. One that is heavily grandfathered, you know, way back. It's a service, was a service station. And one that was converted by the ZBA from a dentist's office to an upholstery shop.
Right, because those were.
And, and I mean, we've got, we've got home businesses all over it. You know, everybody in the world has home offices.
But it's not zoned for that.
But it's not zoned for that.
So the ZBA can't, can't give them a special permit if it's not zoned for it, if they were grandfathered in.
That's right.
Right, so again, to Chris's point, this doesn't change, doesn't protect that.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't. But it makes the, the ability to keep it residential, to invest in it as residential, and to live there more viable.
Right.
Because right now, it's tough to live there.
I understand that, but it also makes it more economical to sell it to someone who would want to build a two-family, too.
It could.
Right. So what, the way I look at it, what you're asking us is, you know, to change the zoning for a financial reason.
Nancy, does a lot go all the way down heading towards Westford, that last property there? Is that the service station?
It's in the middle.
The one, well, there's a gentleman there with, is it asphalt equipment?
Yeah, they were in front of us.
So this, this big lot here.
Oh, okay.
This is the one they were, they were taking the gravel out of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, the one up there with the cursor, is that's the Bertucci's? That's the, okay.
This is Bertucci's up here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
This is the cemetery. This is Lime Kiln Quarry.
Yeah.
It's reservation.
And then.
And this is also town conservation.
So you got that last house heading towards Westford on the left-hand side? Are they in there too, the one that drives it goes up? So there's going to be RC, and then go to RB, and then back to?
Maybe it should be, but I didn't get it.
We should try, I mean, are they the last one?
Yeah, that one down, that one that's all by itself down there?
Yeah.
Actually, I think there's two all by themselves down there, down past Lime.
That they go up on, they have a driveway up the hill?
Yeah, they're up on the hill and in the middle of the swamp.
Vacuna House.
Yeah.
You mean, you didn't get it because the, the homeowners didn't want to participate?
We didn't ask them. We, we basically went along this street. Actually, I didn't, it was Mike's. I mean, I, I put data together for him.
So Nancy, there are 36 properties in this proposal.
That's right. 35 residential's plus the service station.
And only 16 signatures on the petition.
It required 10, you got 16.
What are the feelings of the other 16 residents?
You know, Chris, I can't tell you because I didn't, I didn't go do the surveys. This, this was Mike's, like I said, I, I'm representing data.
Okay.
All right.
Evan, are they looking for a recommendation from us, or?
No, no, so.
No, this has to go to.
This is an intro.
Oh, intro.
This legal ad will go in assuming that the proponent doesn't change course based upon board input. This legal ad will go in early next week. The hearing will open on the 13th.
Okay. And the goal is to get it to town meeting?
Yeah, the, if the, the proponent, if the proponent doesn't change course, it will go to town meeting.
This fall?
Regardless, yes.
This will.
Regardless of the Planning Board recommendation, regardless of the Select Board recommendation, and regardless of the FinCom recommendation.
Oh, okay.
If the proponent wants it to go to town meeting, it goes to town meeting.
Oh, okay.
The purpose of tonight was for the proponents to get some, one for the board to learn a little bit more, the proponent to get some initial feedback. And as the board knows, sometimes proponents change course. They withdraw, they amend. So as part of the legal ad, we'll also do a direct mail notification to the 36 properties.
And the adjoining properties?
Budding properties?
Budding properties?
Yeah, 300 feet.
We can do that if, if, if that's the desire.
I think it's important that you do the budding properties.
So Nancy, the only I would make a recommendation that you can mention to Mike, Michael, is that I would try to get the last neighbors on the street, and then I'd like to see everyone on that, everyone that's highlighted in here to be in the loop that we're changing their property, zone. Meaning.
Yeah.
They're either endorsing it or not.
Yeah.
We get something either yes or no. I mean, that's how I would, if you're looking for a recommendation from me, I would want to know what every single resident there is, wants. I don't know if anyone else feels differently.
Who's going to bring it to town meeting, do you know? Who's gonna bring it to town meeting, do you know?
Oh, I imagine I get to talk it.
I, I think it's important to do the adjoining properties because even though you can see on the map that the, there's a number of neighbors there on Bridge Street. And I know that how homes look like they are distanced from these affected properties, but still you would want to have.
They're important.
They're important.
That's for the notifications.
Yeah, for the notifications.
I, I would think you'd want to notify Bridge Street.
I'll include, I'll include the others.
My comment was the last two that I missed on the street.
And I would think that you'd notify all of Bridge Street, they're within the three hundred.
There's two that they missed.
Yeah.
Oh, what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, I would think that you would want to notify all of Bridge Street because they're within the three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
And what's on the other side?
Uh, the rail trail. And then there's a lot of, uh,
High Street?
High Street's the, the next one up, yeah.
Are they further than three hundred?
I don't know.
Oh, boy.
I, I think so, but, I mean, the back of their properties might be within the three hundred. Oh, yeah, lots of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the Beaver Brook's in there. Um, and it's all wetlands and woods. So it's, it's really isolated from a high street. Um, but it's not isolated from Bridge Street. Bridge Street is pretty much the same kind of a situation as this is, except they don't have the incessant traffic. The truck traffic. You know, they're, they're a cul-de-sac.
So one way or the other, it's going to planning, it's going to town meeting.
Yeah.
So with, with those, others on board.
Correct.
It's going. Okay?
Any other comments? Questions?
I'd love to know what the master, the master plan committee thinks of that change. You can find out, Mike.
Actually, I do have a question for Evan. Was this, I wouldn't imagine that this was identified as one of the zoning conflicts?
Not as part of the NIMCOG study.
Okay, that's what I thought.
No, because the zoning conflicts were really industrial versus residential conflicts.
Yeah, okay.
Whereas this is an inconsistency of zoning. It, it's definitely conflicted, but, you know, it's not because one neighborhood is inca- is incompatible with its adjacent neighborhood, which is what those were.
I would have to say that I feel like the inconsistency isn't very significantly remediated by this change. Yet the possibilities for kind of really changing the town gateway is very significant. So I, I guess, for me, I feel like if you're looking at a risk-benefit analysis, I'm not sure that the, I don't see the, so much the benefit.
And to that end, would it make more sense to shift to trying to, even though it's a longer process, try and do the village zone as opposed to, um, this change?
Yeah, I would love that.
See, I, I think there would be tremendous benefits to a village zone. And if the planning board wants to pursue that, um, I would personally volunteer to be a citizen rep on, you know, a study group for it. Um, because, you know, I, I do research off the assessors database. But I think that's a long process and we have issues today.
Why? Why is this a long?
Because we have people that, that want to add on. We have people that have these older houses that want to put in an apartment. And they're afraid to go to the ZBA because it's expensive, you have to hire a lawyer. It's not just the, the ZBA cost itself, the application cost. You've got to hire a lawyer, you've got to have a surveyor, and you don't know if it's gonna get approved.
So, but you have to do that anyways. Like, you have, I mean, you don't need a lawyer to go to the ZBA. I know many people have done that without an attorney, but you do have to have, you do have to have an architect, you do have to like survey your law. Like, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna add on, you're gonna have to spend those costs anyway.
If, if you're adding on, but if you're, if you're doing a conversion, you don't.
But you, but you talk to your neighbors beforehand and, I don't know, like, to me, this sounds like, this sounds like someone's knocking on the door with a pay jack and wants to.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
They're down in, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, if they're, you know.
What would you think the timeframe would be to do some, to bring forward a village zone?
Deidre, I think you'd be looking at next fall in terms of the timing of getting it all put together and getting citizen feedback and, and taking action on it. And based on planning board, uh, proposals for changing the, uh, the zoning bylaws, I think people are so suspicious of it that, at this point, that they'd turn it down flatly.
What if we brought, what if you brought it for citizens petition? For a village zoning?
We might. I mean, we, it might go through that way if we could get, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty residents of the villages that signed up for it. I mean, I, I think town meeting might.
I'm probably one, I would sign it.
Well, exactly, I mean, that's, that's the problem is, you know, we've got these twelve-hundred-square-foot lots with big houses on them. And they need work at this point. They need, they need to be brought up environmentally. You know, they're, they're all bloody non-compliant with the environmental codes. And they need investment. And when you're so far out of compliance with the zoning, it's hard to make a decision to invest that. So, um, I mean, Mike can go where he wants to with this, and, and he will. All, all I can do is speak to the data on it. But as a, as a resident and property owner here, I'd certainly like to see it go through.
So the next steps, will we open this up for public?
No, so tomorrow, I'm gonna email the petitioner, Mike, who'll copy Nan, ask him if he wants to proceed. If he wants to proceed, then the legal ad will go in on Monday for next Wednesday, low sun, to set the hearing to open on the September thirteenth.
So we don't need to make a motion to open now?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, okay.
Okay.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, next step, MBTA zoning, um.
So NIMCOG is not with us tonight, uh, they don't have any new materials. So there's, there's not, there's no action to be taken on agenda item number two.
The record show I'm back.
Mike Gray's back has rejoined us.
Yes.
Correct.
Let there be cheers and celebration.
Correct, correct. What we do have to consider.
Do a dance.
Uh, it's in your handout that I, uh, that I provided you this evening. So the next step in the scope with NIMCOG is to, per last, last meeting's discussion, was to find dates for the two neighborhood district meetings. So, NIMCOG provided, uh, dates that they are available. And then I put some notations, uh, to remind the board about other, other potential meetings that are going on.
Is that just here today?
Yeah.
Yeah. We didn't have that previously, did we, or did we?
No, you did not.
Oh, okay.
Should we do it during a regular planning board meeting?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Your, your next several meetings, particularly the thirteenth, is gonna be very busy.
I think we should do it sooner rather than later.
Mm-hmm.
Is there gonna be more than two neighborhood meetings?
You were gonna, you were gonna do two and invite, I think you wanted to invite UMass and M- uh, Meeting House to one neighborhood and UPS and River Neck Road to a second separate meeting.
Can we invite all the town meeting, like, should we send out an email to town meeting reps?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We already discussed that.
We talked about that as well.
Okay, for sure.
I was reading an article too, that there were other towns that sent out a town-wide survey too, for the people who couldn't attend meetings, just to provide some feedback. So that may also be another
Avenue.
Avenue to help gather feedback.
Or, I mean, where do we stand with the time, with the website that was gonna gather the information? Maybe we could put an opportunity for people to send us their input via the website. I mean, that way you get the people that want to participate without, um, I mean, I, that town had three-hundred-and-thirty responses or something. I mean, I don't know if that's a significant number or not, but I don't know the.
Sure, yeah, if the board's interested in, um, releasing a survey, maybe announcing it as part of those two neighborhood sessions, uh, then placing it on the town webpage for a certain period of time makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, in those two neighborhood sessions, you know, if telemedia's available, we can have them either cover it live or tape it and rebroadcast it.
Yeah, what if we develop the survey after those two meetings? Then send it out. Because we may get information from, that would, because we have to develop the survey, we're gonna ask like ten questions.
Yeah.
But there might be something that's. Or five, or three, or no, but it could be pertinent to basic learning of, from the meetings that we get, something that we're not thinking as a group.
Right, I, I feel like our target for this, if I'm not mistaken, is we're kind of sitting now at however many we have, five districts. And then we're trying to shoot for a target of maybe three.
Two.
Two or maybe three. Are we gonna get a hundred acres out of two?
Well, we just had that new information thrown at us.
So, yeah, so I sent out an email that.
You read that?
Um, because now the state is saying that, I think when NIMCOG came and presented, we asked the question whether or not, I think you brought up the Chelmsford Mall, whether we could require.
Require first floor.
First floor to be, was it commercial or retail or whatever? And then build on the second, and the answer was no, you couldn't do that.
Right.
But now, the state is backing away from that and now get by, based off of feedback from the towns, I guess, is now saying that it's, they're becoming a little bit, that you can do that.
Yeah, that article wasn't clear.
I wonder, is it allowed or?
It seemed to indicate that it was based upon if your existing zoning required it.
Right.
So.
So I, I, I mean, I would need to get, I would like to get clarification on that.
That's, yeah, I'd like to get, just because, I mean, that could open up.
More real estate.
Right, Drum Hill, it could open up the Chelmsford Mall, like, and Drum Hill would be nice if you could do commercial, like, not get rid of the commercial, but do commercial and, and residential, that's a whole new look and development that could be.
Probably have to widen the road.
But that, I mean, if you could get some information, find out, that would be really.
Be a clarification on that? I don't, I didn't think so.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me if it was gonna be permitted to have resi- residential above.
Yeah.
Or whether it was gonna be mandatory.
The communities that provided that feedback to the state, um, had existing zoning, uh, to encourage, uh, mixed-use center, like village.
Like our center village overlay.
But it'll apply to every town.
Well, I, it's not clear to me whether the, the new change, um, allows any town to propose MBTA mixed-use zoning? Or if you can only do it if you have existing mixed-use zoning.
Yeah, let's get clarification on that point.
If you look at like, there, like, you know, Lexington has a lot of open space, right? Like, some of these towns have a lot of, Chelmsford doesn't have a lot of open space for additional, so if we could capitalize on current commercial, redevelop it in, to me, it's a kind of possibly a win-win.
It is a win.
But, like the, um, laundromat or the nail salons.
Well, let me get, let me get an answer to that. You know, I'll email it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Evan, what about the, uh?
Any thoughts on the dates?
Let's try and do either the nineteenth or the twenty-first. And then, I mean, it seems.
You need, you need two dates.
How about both?
I know, I know, but at least we got one done.
The second of October, maybe?
I think that's too late.
So your preferences are the nineteenth or the twenty-first for the first session?
And then I think we'd have to go for the marathon and do the twenty-eighth. I'd like to get it wrapped up in September, at least the meetings with the neighborhoods.
Okay.
You know what, though, hold on, we may have to put it.
Meeting a marathon with the twenty-seventh being our planning board.
Just from, you've got all the school open houses that in September.
The twenty-eighth is, uh, CHS parent night.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not gonna work. Okay. Well, should we try and do one on the nineteenth and one on the twenty-first and do that kind of a marathon?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
The heck gets it out of the way.
Do we know if there's any other open houses for those days? No?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I know McCarthy is not those nights.
In which, which districts for the nineteenth?
Uh, we're not having one for UMass West, correct? We've already done that.
Oh, you know, you contemplated doing that because the, uh, the district would be, uh, expanded.
Yes.
Okay.
So one would be River Neck and UPS, the other one would be.
UMass.
UMass and Meeting House, Radisson area.
Okay.
So which, which ones do you want for the first session?
Let's do River Neck.
River Neck, get a little.
Let's get beaten down in the first meeting.
Take our beatings.
So River Neck, UPS on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
UMass West and Meeting House.
What was the fifth one?
I can't recall if we had a fifth one at this point.
It was going to be.
I think the board had kind of reduced it to four at the last meeting.
Yeah, potentially the Radisson.
Yeah, I think that was kind of be, gonna be combined maybe with.
With Meeting House kind of, but with two di- different.
No, we're taking away Meeting House and just doing the Radisson.
Is that what it was?
Well, he was gonna get back to us.
Okay.
If the acreage was enough and the units were enough.
Okay.
Yeah, and the height.
With, and, without having
Oh, that you.
The Meeting House. But that was also based on the stipulation that you couldn't have business on the first floor because we were, several of us were feeling, we didn't want to radically adj- alter the situation on Meeting House, but if they could have business on the first floor and residential on the second, I would have a different potentially.
We'll get that clarification for you.
Sentiment.
Palmont Plaza.
For what plaza?
Palmont Plaza, you know, Hong Kong, that whole road.
Yeah, the whole road, yeah, I would, I would rather do that than include Meeting House.
Well, I think the answer will ve- make our choices drastically different.
Yeah, yeah.
So that answer is pretty important.
Yeah, I'll get that out too. Okay.
Evan, what about the question that came up regarding funding? Uh, did anything come from the manager's office?
That same revision, uh, to the program also expanded the, um, uh, the applicable grant programs. Um, so the, the new grant programs are programs that the town has, is als- you know, has also participated in, downtown initiative grants, uh, some, I think there was some transportation-related roadway grants were in there. I can't recall the others off the top of my head.
But that was expanded from what they originally.
Correct, correct.
Well, and, I mean, I guess, going back to the other question about the first floor retail, I mean, I might have a different opinion about where I would like a district to be if we could do the Center Village or Chelmsford Street from, I don't know, the.
John Dock to the higher.
No, no, the, the conversation's entirely different, depending on how the answer comes back.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So if that answer is yes, then we should postpone those sessions.
Right.
And we should put this on the next available agenda.
So don't we have to, as a group, prepare for these meetings to present something to
Yeah.
River Neck Road or UPS, what we will be proposing there? Density, height, I mean.
And we only have one meeting.
Right, may not, as I understood it, you wouldn't be presenting that at the initial neighborhood district meetings. You'd be presenting what NIMCOG presented you, which was the location, and then they're gonna present some, uh, some conceptual visuals and graphics. But my understanding was you wouldn't have any, any specific details beyond its, you know, its fifteen units an acre.
Okay.
Would they be available to help with, help us with that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 as part of the expanded scope, yeah, they're gonna...
So it's an information...
These are the nights that they can do.
It's an informational meeting, and it's not our decision to do that at this time, we're still contemplating.
Right.
Yeah, getting feedback on...
We're getting feedback from, from the neighbors. Whether they're gonna be, like, up in arms and come after us, you know, with...
Well, that's what I was saying, that I think if we had some definitive ideas, before we go in front of them, I think we'll be, maybe come out of it alive.
My, the way I understand this is that NIMCOG's gonna provide some visuals, those visuals will generally represent different types of housing styles.
Structures.
So...
And we're gonna see them for the first time when they're doing the presentation to them?
No, 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 we'll, we'll, we'll have them, we'll, I'll try to get them to either be at the thirteenth or submit it.
Okay.
But it's, remember, those visuals are not Chelmsford-specific.
Right.
They're just general characterizations.
We have no control over it.
Actually, if you Google Massachusetts, the missing middle, there's a bunch of, there's like s- eight different graphics of different types of housing. I mean, it's kind of like taking that
Yeah.
all the way across slide that he showed us.
Yeah.
But breaking it down by housing type each on an individual slide.
That's largely what we're gonna see from them.
Right, but remember, we're not, this is not a guarantee, we're not the developer, like, we're just zoning it, so whatever comes there...
And then we're gonna make parameters, to the extent that we're able, so that they're able to do by right fifteen units, but within our parameters that we stipulate.
And for these meetings, we'd be presenting that information and saying, do residents in these areas think these are good sites for that?
Yeah.
What do you think the answer's gonna be?
I think it depends.
Depends on the, on the neighborhood.
I've, I've heard.
I think it's gonna be, uh, generally no, and everyone enable it. I think we, I think we need to understand why we chose these res- these places.
Yeah.
And I think, because that's number one question, why would you say, I would say, why are you choo- choosing my neighborhood for this, to the board? And I don't think we can answer that yet, or maybe we can.
Well, I think for Riverneck, there's a
That's what I'm trying to get to, is we should have a little homework done beforehand, so that we can answer these questions, because I think they're gonna get confused, they're gonna walk in, and they're gonna, I think they're gonna be looking at the recommendation from us, but more it's an informal, it's an introduction from NIMCOG to them and to us at the same time. But I think a neighbor would ask, why would I be chosen for this? And I don't know if we have a reason for that. We could...
I think a lot of, a lot of what we discussed in the last few meetings on each specific site now.
Okay.
The reason, I think, would vary depending on the site.
Right.
Um, but I think we've been discussing it quite a bit, and NIMCOG, um, has some recommendations based on their data.
Right.
So I think we'd be able to give them answers.
Okay.
Particularly because we're leaving the door open for them to help us to find what those parameters should be.
Right, exactly, that's the idea.
You can't do height, you can't do setback parameters, right? Like, so we're limited what our parameters can...
You can do height, right?
I think we can do height and setback parameters.
No, he said no, last time.
Can't be unreasonable.
Yeah, and I think also Evan was saying that, that another way of going at that was to, I mean, you can, you can say it, but using form, form-based, you know, approach as opposed to that's part of what we can throw through, too.
Right, right, but if I just, like, remember, this is the new law, and be careful, I guess, I guess, you know, like, I'm all for putting parameters, right, by all means, but I'm also cognizant on how much we can... Once we give up control, we've given up control. This is a total, once we've given up control, we've given up control, this is what the state is saying, and what comes in, comes in, we have, it doesn't go through us, and we have no fallback of whether it fits the neighborhood or not, so that's all, I'm just making sure that what, clear on, you know, when we look at these, how much we can control, because I don't want another, oh, I really didn't think that was going there, oops, situation.
Okay. So the nineteenth for Riverneck UPS, the twenty-first for UMass West and Meeting House, um, for now. And then, I guess, do we wanna have a conversation amongst ourselves at the moment, or are we able to? If we are able to adjust our thinking based on these new guidelines and use areas that have commercial or retail on the ground floor, are there other areas?
Let's get the analysis of what those, what those changes actually mean. I mean, I just saw it today, I have a hunch from the information that was there, what they mean, but I think clarification is in order. And ultimately, the major limitations to what we can and can't do are gonna be applied by the density requirements, and more than probably any other single factor.
But I think if the, but I think if the answer is yes, then we'll have, since we have to postpone those to rethink everything, we'll have some time to discuss it in the next meeting after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there's no way we'd be able to prepare new areas before these September meetings.
I would imagine that we would have, like, one member who's doing most of the interacting, explaining, as opposed to each of us having to explain it. I would imagine one of us would be...
I can't hear you.
Sorry, I imagine one person, one of us would be the one who's mainly interacting with the public, uh, you know, who's explaining, at least I would think that you'd want somebody to give the intro. I don't think you want NIMCOG giving the intro, uh, and, and be the main responder to questions, and then, and then others can assist as needed. I, I would think, I think we'd want that. So we can, we can think about whether you want that and who that might be on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to...
How about if we take Town Council input next out of order, since he's been waiting so patiently? And come back to zoning work session? Okay.
So, I was just gonna request that the Chair provides some, some scope of what this discussion is going to be, uh, because I know...
I think this is informational, in terms of, I mean, I, I think first Paul's gonna answer the questions that we've asked him. So, and then after that, I think, um, we should have a discussion amongst ourselves about, um, what the relevant questions are, and, um, how we wanna think about answering them. I mean, I don't imagine we're gonna take any action tonight, if that's what you're driving at.
Right, no, I was, I was more driving at that, that that's clarified that we're not taking action.
I think this is information, mostly informational, for us to better understand what happened, and hopefully figure out how it won't happen again, and what to do about it.
And just before, uh, Town Council starts, um, Attorney Doug Duchaine has joined us on Zoom, and Casey's also, uh, in the room. And if some of you recall, at your last meeting, uh, you had asked me to reach out to the applicant, um, and invite them to give an update. They initially declined, uh, they, they provided me an explanation, and then when it evolved to the point where the board decided to place this on the agenda, um, I think the, the applicant, um, has decided to, to appear tonight. So I know they're prepared and interested in, in engaging with the board as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, for the record, Paul Haverty, Town Council. So I was asked to look into essentially the question as to what authority a board has, a planning board has to modify a previously issued special permit to either change the substance of the permit, or to rescind that permit if there was some sort of material misrepresentation or omission of pertinent facts during that hearing process. And the answer to that was actually surprisingly less clear than I thought it would have been. Essentially, if, if you were the Board of Appeals, sitting on a special permit application, it is very clear that you have the right to modify a previously issued permit, you know, once you've given proper notice to the applicant in a butters. But that is applicable only to Boards of Appeals. It's, uh, it's a statutory provision contained in Chapter forty-eight, Section fourteen. There's no analogous provision applicable to planning boards when they're acting as a special permit granting authority. So I did look at some case law, I didn't find anything that really was i- in terms of a precedent-setting appellate decision. However, I did find the case that I cited in this email here, um, which is a rescript opinion, so it's not necessarily precedential, but it is instructive. And essentially, what it suggests is that a planning board may, with proper notice, rescind or modify a previously issued special permit based upon material misrep- misre- misrepresentation or omission. Again, as long as it follows the proper procedures, and also that it should be very, very reluctant to do so, because the, the concept of a special permit decision being final is an important concept that needs to be relied upon by applicants, by lenders, by neighbors. So, I, I think the board should tread carefully in making a determination as to what it wants to do with this. However, there is at least some case law out there that it would be helpful if the board does want to consider a rescission or a modification.
I mean, it seems to me that we should also be entitled to the basic principle that we'll be presented with factually correct information in making our determinations.
Factually complete, as well.
Factually complete, as well.
Correct, but you, you also wanna make sure, when you're talking about missing information or information that wasn't provided, that it's actually material to whatever decision you're making. So if they left something out that, you know, is a minor oversight, that is something that's not really, something that is part of what your criteria is in, in when you're issuing your special permit, then that's something that definitely you would not have the authority to, to revisit. However, if it is a material misrepresentation or omission, um, and it is something that is directly related to your special permit criteria, I, I think you're on much stronger ground.
So, can I ask you a question? So, the fact that the P, is it P?
PFAS?
PFAS.
P, PFAS, was not provided to the board, and the fact that, like, you have to provide that to the state. Who has the obligation to provide that information? Does the applicant, is the applicant required to provide that information? Like, where is, or...
I, I, I think the property owner, if they're aware of it, is required to report that to the state. I don't know, I...
They're required to report it to the state, but are they required to, to report it to planning boards, or, like, like, whose responsibility is that?
Well, I, I don't think in, as a general matter, there's a requirement to report PFAS contamination to the planning board. Again, it's a question of whether or not there was a special permit application in front of this board where the presence of PFAS would have a material impact upon whatever decision the planning board is going to make. Then you can argue that there wasn't an obligation, but as a general matter, no, they, if someone discovers PFAS on their property, they're not required to inform the planning board. They're required to inform DEP.
Okay, so our purview is stormwater drainage and, and some
Some aquifer protection.
Some aquifer protection, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if they're doing building and moving dirt around, they're, even, e- taking, taking it aside that they aren't, they didn't, weren't the creators of the contamination. But, so, I'm concerned, I don't want, I don't want dirt moving around to make it worse.
That's deep.
And, so, I don't know how we can regulate that it doesn't get made worse if we don't know that it's there.
Yeah, I, I, if I can express an idea or two on this one, uh, I don't think we can claim the expertise to make
Right.
particular decisions about moving what, dirt does what. We all, I think we all know, have a basic sense that this can be a problem. Looking at this procedurally, what can we do to keep from stumbling, you know, over this rock again? I would suggest that as part of our checklist, that we simply have an inquiry into the DEP. And, uh, if, if we simply, every time we had a, a, a property of some substantial size involved in special permitting, where this would be material, let's just have a little box, say we call them up and find out what's going on. I presume that they can tell us. I may be wrong here.
That's a long process.
It's public information.
It's public information, so...
If there's been a report filed...
Right, then we can get that information.
Correct.
And, and if we simply ask for it, we'll be a little bit farther ahead, I mean, this time we didn't know to ask.
Well, I think, I think that if you, if we, if we, and I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Only where I disagree with you is that we not ask for the information that's been provided to DEP, because DEP has certain criteria about that reporting, including that you be the landowner.
Yeah.
Which in this case, the, the person was not the landowner.
Right.
Until a year later.
That makes it a little...
And, and so I think that what we would request instead is if, if you have information
Yeah.
from your due diligence, that is, that conforms to, I think it's a twenty-one E or something like that, we can figure out the right wording, then we want you to report that to us. And I think that would be the way to have caught this.
Yeah, well, we, we can, we can ask that both, both of the applicant and of the DEP.
Well, especially where they were asking for...
Well, we would ask that of the applicant.
Well, if, if you make that, if you make that part of your application process, it puts you in much greater
Yeah.
much firmer footing.
I, I think we're on the same page here.
To then say that failure to include it is a material misrepresentation and then impacts your decision.
And I think we should at least take that step.
I agree with that, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Madam Chair, a question for Town Council. Is there a way that, as a board, we can have, like, or require the, the property owner to, to provide, or have a licensed site professional provide this board with some assurance that the, the disturbing of that site or excavation will not have an adverse impact? Like, if you think of this site where it's located, right on the opposite side of the highway is a huge wetland area that I believe is the aquifer of the East Chelmsford Water District. So my, then the wells are there, so my concern is that had I known that that contamination was there, I'm not saying I would have voted differently, but perhaps I would have voted differently.
Well, I mean, I think that's something that you can absolutely have that discussion with the applicant, um, to try to, to get you comfortable with what it is that they're doing. And what I suggest is that, you know, you, you have these discussions with the applicant before you make a determination whether or not to pursue either a modification or a rescission of the previously issued permits. So you can, A, you know, get the factual information necessary, and B, take that factual information and use it, you know, to support whatever determination you're going to make.
And can we requ- like, can we, like, I guess, part of, as part of this, negotiate with the applicant to, like, even though we granted the special permit, say, to waive something, but if they're willing to negotiate something to remediate any of our concerns, can we, can, like, can we negotiate that with them, like?
I think that's what he's suggesting we do.
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting that you do. I mean, I think that if you are able to get all of your concerns addressed through that process, then there's no need to actually move forward with the somewhat legally murky approach of, of rescinding or modifying the permit, you know, through your own accord, rather than through an applicant coming in and requesting a modification.
But doesn't the DEP give the order of conditions on how to repair, remediate sites? That's not planning board's responsibility.
That is correct.
That's correct.
So, we're chat, we're, we're about to go down a rabbit's hole in what we're asking to negotiate on remediating.
What I think that you should be asking for in terms of information is how, you know, what they're proposed to do in the special permit impacts any of these, these issues. You know, information, you know, that you would have addressed when you were originally issued the permit, had you known about this particular factual circumstance. So that, I mean, that's what you want to develop with this applicant, is find out, you know, exactly what it is that's there, what it is that they're proposing to do, and how that is impacted, and how that impacts, you know, the, the issues that you're looking to protect, which in this case, you know, is the aquifer.
Yeah, one of, one of the things, if you don't mind jumping in, one of the things in response to what you were, you were asking, Mike, and that is that, obviously, that there is going to be a determination that there is a source of this contamination, and that that person's gonna be responsible for remediation. And this, uh, the two seventy Bill Ricka owner, um, has filed for, has, has had their licensed site professional file for a downgrade proper, downgrading... file for a downgrade property, downgrading property status, which is essentially their way of saying to DEP, we're not the source. And so they're not responsible for remediation. So that means the source of the remediation still needs to be determined. And then once that's determined, that person then needs to implement remediation. And that process could take much longer than it would take for this current applicant if they were going to continue building, to build. And so that's one of the concerns that I have, for example, is, is there anything that we're going to be allowing in terms of them building that's going to end up potentially interfering with remediation? So for example, if we put a building on a footprint and then afterwards find out that the soil underneath that footprint is contaminated, you're not, how effectively can you treat that soil because it's got a building on top of it? So those would be the kinds of things I'd be concerned about. But as far as the material aspects go, which is something I did, I did look at, I did read through the immediate response action with the IRA, which is like a 330-page document. I didn't read every 333 pages because a lot of those are, are, you know, chain of custody on samples and things like that, which, which actually I've done before when we did volunteer water quality sampling. But, but the first, like 30, 50 pages has the meat of the information in it. And looking at it, I would say that one of the main concerns I have is that the licensed site professional was viewing this largely from the perspective of showing downgrading property status, but not specifically addressing the concerns that I think this board would have. And that is, how is what you're planning to do, how could that potentially either exacerbate or spread the contamination? And the two main areas that we're concerned with that are, one, is the soil, where, you know, is the soil contaminated? There were seven different observation wells that were used where they did, where they did soil samples. But, and I won't go into it now, but there is a whole, you know, reasonable theory, particularly from other sources, other technical sources like ITRC, which is the Interstate Technical Regulatory Council, has a, has a whole document on PFAS, which I highly recommend, particularly if you remember your high school chemistry or beyond. But it, you know, there's a lot of good information out there that helps you to try to understand what is, what's, what's going on in terms of how the, how the potentially the contamination could be on the site. And, and when, when you look at that and then you compare what sampling was done, I have questions, serious questions about whether we have sufficient knowledge about where the contaminated soil is. That's the first one. The reason that's important is because there's infiltration planned for this site and you don't want to be, previously that, up until now, has been impervious. So there's been no water coming through the soil down to the ground table. When you add infiltration, now you're essentially putting water through but is potentially contaminated soil into the groundwater, adding to the already contaminated groundwater. Right, that's, that's one. And then the other one is if an infiltration, we're essentially, again, injecting a good amount of water into the, into the groundwater, are we potentially, you know, causing a situation where the groundwater is spreading even beyond this current site? I think those are two very legitimate, reasonable concerns that I think this board.
I totally agree. However, is this for us?
Well, yes, I do because we have responsibility for aquifer protection. And that's one of, that is one of our responsibilities.
So are we going to investigate this while conservation is investigating it, while the water district is investigating it?
Water district is not investigating this.
Is that correct?
The Conservation Commission is currently looking at issues related to this. The Conservation Commission also is limited in their jurisdiction. So they don't have jurisdiction over the building. And if we have concerns about the, where the building is going or potentially what is under it, that is our jurisdiction, that's not their jurisdiction.
So I think the questions that you propose are the two questions, like I think you should ask the two questions because I couldn't ask those.
But my question, my question to you, Paul, is in terms of a process, it feels like we need to answer these questions in the context, essentially reopening a public hearing to find the answers to these questions as opposed to just a dialogue between us and, and the applicant.
Well, I, I think in the first instance, you've got to make the tie between the information you're looking for and an interest protected, you know, by the aquifer protection district bylaw. And then once you do that, you can make a determination as to whether or not a public hearing needs to be opened. But I think before you do that, you need to make sure that you've gotten your, you know, your arms wrapped around exactly what the issues are, what the potential resolutions are, and how it impacts the interests that you are sitting to protect. Because there are multiple different interests that are protected here and it's not just the aquifer protection district. And, you know, your role in granting special permits under that aquifer protection district is limited to the criteria that's, that's in the bylaw. So you want to make sure that you're reviewing that criteria and that any decision you're making is relating to that criteria.
Exactly. I mean, I think as Council's saying, the board needs to take a close look at that aquifer protection regulation.
Uh-huh.
And at face value, it doesn't hit the spot.
And I disagree with that. I think it does because it talks about best management practices for stormwater. Best management practices are established with the assumption that what the soils that you're going into are not contaminated. So when you, when you have contaminated soils, EPA has put out a document in which they strongly discourage you from infiltrating into contaminated soils. So because of the issues that I mentioned before, so in fact, the aquifer protection bylaw and that particular standard is appropriate. And we also have, in the other permits that we issued, there are either aspects of contamination or also of proper use of BMPs that apply as well. So I think there is a connection. I think there's a material connection. And I think those are things that the board would have wanted to know in order to, to consider how this, how this project might have gone together. Because I can tell you that if I had been on the board and it had been before me, I would have said, when they came back for, to lower it by two feet, I would have said, you know, I don't want you to get any closer than one foot above seasonal high groundwater just to reduce any risk of interfering with, intercepting contaminated soil. And I probably also would have said, I don't want any infiltration. I don't want it to put any water into the ground, I just want you to treat the water and then send it offsite, you know, onto, onto the wetlands or, or those areas otherwise. So there, I think there are potentially significant differences in how this project could have turned out based on this information.
Just a couple other items for the board for context. The commission is in the process of doing significant peer reviews. Joel can, Joel and Chris can probably speak to the level of detail a lot better than I can. But my point to the planning board is this is actively in front of the Conservation Commission. They are doing multiple peer reviews directly associated with their jurisdiction and the impacts associated with this. Knowledge of PFAS as it pertains to protecting the interests in the, in the Wetlands Protection Act and their bylaw, which is, I understand, it discharges to surface water and groundwater and aquifer as well. Next item I just want you to be aware of, I am in, I've been in communication with the Center Water District Superintendent Andy Reed over the last variety of months and variety of topics. This has been one. And last week, Andy and I agreed that the next best step would be to convene a group of stakeholders, including the three water districts, staff from the Conservation Commission, myself, Town Council, DPW, as well as at least two members from the commission and the planning board. I sent this email out today to the Chair of the CONCOM and Planning Board. My suggestion within this email was that Joel Luna and Chris LaValle be designated as the planning board reps into this working group, for lack of a better word, and that Peter Spawn and Carl Bischoff from the CONCOM be participating in this. The email indicated that we're trying to schedule this meeting for next Wednesday or Thursday, ideally during, during the daytime. Obviously, that's dependent upon citizen volunteers and elected officials being available. But I, I'd like to have this meeting as part of this dialogue. I think there are, just as Joel is saying, there's relevant information that the board isn't aware of as it pertains to the IRA. This board is also not very familiar with what the commission is doing related to its peer reviews. And then I know that there's a lack of information, knowledge and information that's being shared between the districts and their methodologies as to how and why they comment to a planning board on project by project basis. So that's part of the reason for the meeting is to try to provide a forum whereby the districts are comfortable and engaging, primarily the center district, and also provide an opportunity for board, the board members, to engage directly in that information sharing. And then we can, those board members can then bring that information back to the full, the full boards and commissions. So I think within the context of engaging with the, with the applicant and trying to figure out, as Council's saying, is what's, what's material to the planning board's jurisdiction, I do think that what the commission is doing and this engagement with the districts will likely be relevant within that entire, entire discussion.
Just to add, I don't, the relevance, the relevance to this board is no less than the relevance to the Conservation Commission. There's no difference in the relevancy to, to what decisions that we make. And I'm, I actually, we are well aware of actually what the CONCOM is doing and, and the different activities that they're pursuing. But we are not members of the Conservation Commission. So we do not have input into how that gets guided and we don't have input into specific things that we may have concerns about that they are not necessarily looking at. So the question then becomes, well, if we're going to wait until they finish the CONCOM process and then see if we want them to come back, then there's the potential for us to say, hey, there's these other things that we want you to do or make significant changes to the plans or the project, in which case then they may, will probably need to go back to the CONCOM. So I don't know what the answer is as far to how to make that, you know, process the most efficient for all parties concerned. I'm just interested in making sure that this board's interests are represented and taken into consideration first. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that my concern to, I understand that it's murky as far as rescinding in order, but, not in order, sorry for that, permit. But my concern is this, that the, the current owner, who was not the owner then, had, had material information, I think any reasonable person would have considered that material information, that was withheld from this board on two occasions, two permitting processes. And now for the result to be that, well, we may make some adjustments to your project in the end, is not giving any sort of deterrent to anyone ever withholding information from us. And I feel like that is, that alone is a very strong motivation for wanting to rescind the permit, just so that people understand that if they do that, there are going to be repercussions. But I understand that there's also a certain matter of the board wanting to be efficient in what it's doing and not necessarily looking for trouble. But on the other hand, that's, that's one of the, you know, me, I'm more, you know, concerned about getting the, getting the results that we want out of this. But I do feel that there's at least some pause that should be taken to some consideration being given, that this board, we had material with, information withheld from them and the end result is going to be not much different than if you had just gone through the permitting process anyway. And that bothers me.
I've got another clarifying question on the process. It's clear that we have some questions to answer. If we want to do a public hearing to try and get to the answers, do we have to rescind the permit first and then go through a process?
You can't rescind the permit without having a duly noticed public hearing.
Okay. So I understand the reluctance to rescind a permit, but that's not what we're deciding on now. We're deciding on whether to have that discussion continued on whether or not we have enough information to rescind or not. I would like to have that discussion in a public hearing forum at the same time that the Conservation Commission is, is doing their process to find additional information. So that way we can do it together in a joint process that's a little bit more efficient than sequentially. So I.
Concurrent, not joint.
Sorry, yeah, concurrent. So I, I think we should move forward with a public hearing to find out more information, to gather the information.
What information are we trying to gather?
Like whether or not we need to, like, the plans need to be changed. If there's something that, like, we approved a set of plans with aqua docs and what have you and all that stuff, and whether or not.
Groundwater, not soil.
It should be changed. And if the applicant's willing to change it and it satisfies our concern about the contamination, and it is our obligation to protect the citizens of this town. Because quite frankly, I don't want to be sued.
I'm, I'm not suggesting.
Because I haven't, that's what I've got a concern about. Like they withheld something and we approved it, that could result in this contamination spreading and getting into our groundwater. So if they're willing to negotiate.
May I suggest that maybe you want to hear from Attorney Doug Duchene?
Well, before that, I just want to say, I can provide you a list of information, I think, that we would want. I can also provide for you at least, you know, the things that I said about how potential resolutions to this, at least from.
How what?
Potential resolutions for this from the board's perspective. So I can, I can write that up and provide that. So at least you, you know, it's not just, you're not just hearing it now for the first time.
It would also be good to get definitive information on what the extent of the contamination is.
Well, exactly. That would be the first thing.
Yeah.
Because we don't have, I don't, and I would put into there what the rationale is for why I believe that the information that is currently there is not sufficient for us to know where the contamination is in order to be able to make these kinds of decisions. I'm talking about the soil when I say we don't know where the contamination is. The groundwater is fully contaminated, that is known. We don't need further evidence of that. Right? But it's the soil that is, is, is in my mind not clearly identified. And even before you do that, the commission, I know, is seeking to get better estimates on the seasonal high groundwater. And that's the very first thing you would need to do because generally where you're expecting to see the contaminated soil is somewhere around seasonal high groundwater and down. So that's why that's important to know. So there's, I can, I can lay these out and I didn't mean to go into detail tonight, but I can provide those. But yeah, there's information I think that we would want to know in order to be able to make, make decisions with regards to this project. But okay, I'm done.
Does anyone have any further questions for Attorney Haverty?
Let's, let's hear from Duchene.
Are you willing to give us your, or able to give us your version of events in response?
Yes, Madam Chair, and again, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Douglas Duchene, and as you know, I do represent DH Property Holdings, the applicant with respect to the permits that you're discussing tonight. And first of all, for the record, I have to state that I take supreme exception to Mr. Luna publicly accusing my client of knowingly and purposely withholding information from that board, from your board or any other board for that matter. I, I don't know that that has been determined to be a fact, although clearly Mr. Luna has come to that conclusion. So I do want that on the record. First of all, I'd like to sort of expand a little on what Evan said. He did contact us and asked whether or not we would be willing to meet with the, the planning board. And I did say yes, although I said that we weren't ready to do that now. First of all, I, I hope you know, and I've said it publicly, that there was no, there was no knowledge among this development team about this contamination prior to our application for the original permits or even the modification. And I would, I would ask you, why would my clients have filed for a modification if they knew that there was a situation on the property that would have caused, you know, the process that we're currently going through? Moreover, you will note that my client did not own this property during some of the, some of the permitting process, but that the day after they purchased the property, they did. but that the day after they purchased the property, they did in fact make all required filings based on the information they obtained as part of that closing regarding this contamination. And so they did file immediately, because as the property owners, they were required to do so. The other thing I'd like to point out is, you know, I just get the feeling that we're, we're being considered the bad guy here when in fact, we are a down gradient receptor. There is no evidence, there's no, no suggestion that this property is the source of this contamination, but rather, we, like other property owners, down gradient of the potential sources are victims here. Our properties have been contaminated through no fault of our own. So it wasn't until the modification request with the, with the conservation commission that it was brought to my attention and Casey's attention, that there had been a filing made by our clients within 24 hours, I believe, of when they purchased the property, so that they met all of their legal obligations to, you know, under the law. So we have then gone, and as you know, we are in, and I'm, I know Mr. Luna is very aware of this. We are currently working with the conservation commission to address the impact of this now known contamination, of which we're not the source. We are working with DEP in terms of all required filings, working through a mediation plan, if there is one. As you probably know, the DEP does allow the development of contaminated sites. In fact, they encourage it to the extent that it can either help or, you know, not affect the contamination. And we are going through the process now of making sure that our proposed projects meets all of those DEP requirements as dictated through your conservation commission. We are also providing your conservation commission everything they've asked for, and that is all being peer reviewed by Beta. So with respect to our groundwater discharge plan, our stormwater management plan, so both sides of the coin. The whole stormwater issue is being reviewed by your commission and your, your peer reviewers, your LSP from Beta. And we are also working with DEP to address their concerns and requirements in developing the property as we have proposed, now that it has been determined to be contaminated. So my clients are doing everything possible in providing every possible answer and piece of information that we've been asked, including the voluminous requests from the Lunas. We've been responding to everything, and in fact, we've agreed to have the town's peer review engineers review their questions and our answers to their questions. So, you know, we're not holding anything back here. We're doing everything we can. And the reason I hesitated, or I, I said to Evan that while we are certainly willing to meet with the, the, the planning board, I, I'm not really sure what information I could give you now until and unless we get through the, the, the plan, excuse me, the conservation meeting as well, conservation hearings as well as the DEP process that we're going through, all of which again is being peer reviewed and overseen by your LSPs, by the town's LSPs. I think what was going to happen here is it's going to be shown that we can in fact develop the property as proposed, that we can provide a stormwater system that will be safe, will not increase or cause this contamination to go anywhere else, including soil testing and, and more water testing and, you know, just everything we need to do to prove that. At that point, we are, we're, we're more than happy to voluntarily come back to the board, explain to you what the final determinations were with respect to the conservation and DEP requirements in order for us to go forward. And of course, I would also be reporting and potentially seeking a modification if there are any changes to, you know, and I think, I'm sure there will be at this point. For instance, if there are changes to the stormwater, the way we manage our stormwater, we're going to have to come back to your board to modify our groundwater discharge permit, excuse me, our Aqua for Protection District permit, because we are making a proposed modification to the infiltration system or to the stormwater system. So we're not trying to avoid working with you. We again may in fact have to come back for modifications to the permits. So, you know, we'd be asking for a meeting. But I'm here to commit on behalf of my client that, you know, once we get a handle on what DEP is going to require, what your conservation commission is going to require, and that we've satisfied those requirements or we can satisfy those requirements, we can build the project in the way required, we're, we're more than happy to come into you and discuss it, explain what we did, what, you know, how we got through all of that, and then ask you whether you have any, you know, concerns that we need to satisfy in the context of perhaps another modification request. If in fact, we do change our, and again, I know we are. We're going to change our stormwater and our infiltration. And if we do that, I suspect that means we have to come in for a modification of the groundwater, excuse me, the Aqua Protection Permit. And that's the time where your board will have the opportunity to ask us any questions, require any information, as Mr. Luna has indicated, he has specific comments and feels that perhaps the, the DEP, the DEP and the conservation commission won't address or satisfy. I find that hard to believe, quite frankly, but if that is the case and we're back before you, you know, to discuss the Aqua Protection District Permit, you have every right to ask us for that information and we're going to provide it. Because at the end of the day, we want to show to you that we are in fact, you know, responsive to the situation, that we reported it at the moment we were legally able to do so or required to do so. And that, you know, my clients are, are really just want to make this work for everyone and, and build their project. To the extent there's people out there that think they can utilize this current situation as a way to start the project, well, you know, that, that's, that's their decision and, and issues to make. But I can assure you, my clients will provide all of the assurances and all of the technical requirements necessary to satisfy both the conservation commission and the planning board. It's just that it seems to me that it would be a significant waste of time and money to drag us in now. And essentially, we would give you all the same information that's currently being peer reviewed and discussed by the, by the conservation commission, only to have us in two different processes together that are just going to delay, which I again believe is the intention of, of people that are, you know, pushing this issue. So I can't stop this board from, you know, having a, a new, a new hearing under the, on the premise that you're going to revoke our permit. But I would just suggest that if you give us a little time, we will have that conversation with you without it being a, you know, a notification to request, to repeal our permits. Because at that point, then there's a legal discussion of whether or not, you know, the board is doing it the right way or has the right to do it. And I, I don't see why we should have to go through that problem when I'm telling you right now, we will be back before you once we get the answers to all of the questions that have been raised by, you know, everyone involved. And again, to the extent that, you know, that some members of the board might feel that they want to take that action as a punitive action, because clearly, you know, people feel or people have concluded that my clients knowingly and purposely withheld the information, I mean, I, I just don't think that's right. And-
Can we just go over a couple of the facts? Could I, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
When was the property purchased? What date?
June 1st.
June?
June 1st.
June 1st, okay.
Yes.
When was the report to the DEP?
Casey, can you help me out with that? Was it the second or third?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. June 2nd. And are you, are you aware that on that form, it's checked off that the PRP was informed of this? Are you aware of that?
What's a PRP? I'm sorry.
Potentially responsible party, which, which was identified on the same form.
The release log is filled out by Mass DEP, not us.
Yeah, we didn't file that. That was Mass DEP.
I'm talking about the form that indicates what the levels were as well as that there is a potential responsible party identified on it.
Which, which specific form?
I don't have the form with me, so I didn't, I didn't come prepared to actually have to reintroduce that information, which I did last time.
Well, there was a previous concern about what was filled out in the Mass DEP release log. It was insinuated that it was intentionally withheld by the project team. That release log is filled out by Mass DEP and not us.
Well, I, yeah, and I don't know who, who that might be. That was not me. I, I did not insinuate that a development team withheld information from us. I didn't say that. What I said was that there is a form that's on the DEP website reporting releases. And on that form, which I brought with me, but on that form, it's identified that there, the PRP was informed of this and the PRP was identified as your applicant. So you tell me, you know, if DEP is making that up, then what information are they basing that on? My understanding is that that was submitted by the LSP.
Well, what I will tell you-
So I, I don't, we, maybe the better thing to do is for me to produce that form and then you can confirm whether that form is the form that you're thinking about.
Well, what I, I guess what I would recommend is, as Doug was getting at, is if we finish our proceedings with conservation commission, when we come back to update you, we can have the LSP present to answer these questions, because these questions are going to be asked by conservation commission and their answers peer reviewed by conservation's peer review anyway.
Yeah, I actually want to take this opportunity to respond, if I may, to some of the things that, that Mr. Duchene said. And, and he said, made allusion to people wanting to delay and stop the project. If you're referring to the activities, my activities or activities of the ConCom and wanting to seek to understand what information is needed and so forth and so on of that, as a, as due diligence of that is seen by you as stopping the project or delaying, then I think you have a misunderstanding of that. I also want to make it clear, because you made reference to requests to ConCom from the Lunas. That is also incorrect. Those requests came from Mrs. Luna, and that was clear in her communications to them. Those requests did not come from me, to be clear on that as well. Also, you weren't sure what DEP or ConCom wouldn't, couldn't address or modify. That's a situation where ConCom, certainly not DEP, and this board may have differences of opinion about how this should be resolved. There is that potential, in particular, because I know they're going down the path of seeing how, you know, how potentially you might be able to still reduce the site down to two feet below. And I, I'm not in favor of that. I don't think this board should be either. But I'm not saying that that is what this board is going to decide to do. I'm just saying that is an example of how there might be differences between us. I do want to also, you, you raised the question, why would they go for an amendment if they knew the site was contaminated? I think that, I think you could easily imagine a number of different reasons, reasonable reasons, why that would be so. I'm not going to go into those as speculation. And you also said that the day after, you notified the day after the property was owned. But we also know that that same LSP, the year earlier, had first detected PFAS. So we know that the LSP was aware. We know that the LSP was working for someone, presumably your client. But I won't say then, I think it's reasonable to assume that he knew. But in any case, from the form that we still need to confirm, from that form, certainly one could easily conclude that the owner did know. And that was prior to the amendment, amended permit review. So I think some of your representations are not quite accurate. But nonetheless, I should state clearly, my intention is not, I, I think, my personal opinion is I think that there is a solution that would allow this project to continue. I'm, I'm not here to stop the project. Frankly, I have no interest in stopping this project. I only have an interest in making sure that we, this board does its due diligence in ensuring that the bylaws are upheld. And that's all I'm seeking to do. That's all.
And I would like to add to that, that part of what I have been proposing is to speed up the process and not hold hearings sequentially, but do things in parallel so that we can get this resolved as quickly as possible. I, as a former project manager, you speed up a project by doing processes in, in parallel and not in sequence. So that's, I'm not looking to stop the project. I'm not looking to delay the project. I was actually proposing to speed up a resolution by trying to address this question and, and get our questions answered as quickly as we can.
Okay. I'm going to interject now a couple of things. One is, I have a question, maybe for you, Paul. Is it possible, can, can a buyer of a property disclose publicly to a regulatory body such as the DEP information about things they've found on a property they don't yet own, but that they've discovered in their due diligence? Like, would that be a reasonable thing to expect that someone would disclose that when they found it out, if they didn't own the property?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I would say that there's potentially some risk as a potential buyer. The obligation to report is on the property owner, not on the property purchaser.
But if the purchaser found it out, that doesn't necessarily mean that the prior owner knew it at that time.
Correct, but, but essentially, the presumption would be that they would disclose that to the property owner. I mean, it's going to be something, either they're going to move forward with the purchase despite it or it's going to be a basis for not moving forward with the purchase. But ultimately, you would presume it would be disclosed to the property owner.
Right, it would be negotiated and maybe they negotiate price or something.
Yeah, it's a question of how much is disclosed, so there may be enough disclosed in order to be able to, as you say, negotiate.
Negotiate a cheaper price.
But not insufficient detail that then that owner, the owner that's selling, is obligated to report. And, and DEP has confirmed that that happens. It's a reality.
Okay. So I am a little uncomfortable with the way these, these discussions are already proceeding in terms of, I'm not an expert on how many inches the building's going to be built in or the stormwater drainage. And in general, in our proceedings, I rely on the engineers and experts in the, in the peer review bodies, et cetera, to advise me on the effectiveness. So while I have great respect and appreciation for your depth of knowledge, and I think that gives you the ability to review, the peer review, probably with more attention and understanding than I have, at the end of the day, I don't want to do that as a body. I don't think that's the appropriate, our appropriate role. So I'm comfortable, if we can come up with a list of questions that we want to address that don't have to do with how many inches in the dirt, or exactly the direction of the plume, or any of that, like, I just don't think that's-
But those are relevant to the things that you made.
I like to have a peer review.
They're having a peer review.
No, but I like to have, we're not, and we're the one that issued the permit, so we would have had a peer review.
Are we going to peer review the peer review?
No, I want us to-
Okay, can we have questions for the peer review body that is already doing the work instead of duplicating the work? I mean, this is the-
Deirdre, that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting, that we, that we have a public hearing to get those answers from the peer review, because we don't have those answers.
My suggestion is, the, the board should develop a list of questions. We can share those questions with the-
We can share those questions with the applicant. We can share them with the commission. We can share them with the beta peer review. I still think that that list of questions then needs to be checked on whether it's material to the Aquifer Protection District. And I don't know the process in which that issue gets resolved. That's a legal question in my mind. And so normally, we go to council for that legal question. But I think the technical questions that the board is going, wants to ask need to be identified first to then figure out whether they're material to the Aquifer Protection District. Again, at face value, many of the things we're talking about tonight are not mentioned in the Aquifer Protection District.
I still have a problem with the timeline.
That's a separate.
I have a, that's what this hearing's about. I have a problem with it.
Do they have to disclose that to us? I mean, we didn't ask the question. So should we ask the question of every applicant coming through, is the soil contaminated?
But they knew.
But there was a project that came in through town that we found out after is contaminated, but we denied the project. But we didn't ask the project all the way through.
These people knew. These people knew for weeks. And then they came in front of us again without providing that information.
No, so yeah, just going forward, how do we learn from this or something?
So, you know, I got a problem.
Well, I think.
I do, personally.
I can see your point. I think we're best off really separating procedural changes that we might make to keep this sort of thing from happening. And I've made some suggestions about how we might do that. And I think that's probably the more important thing. We got one case here. I want to avoid having 10 cases in 10 years that look like this. So I think we should make it a regular part of our process to ask that question.
But I think we're getting a little confused here, because we have a proponent in front of us.
Yeah.
We have the issue with right now. And we do have the power to rescind. And I think we should.
You don't have all the information.
I have an operating the timeline right here, that he was withholding this information.
Would I like to?
Do we not?
My suggestion to the board is that these are.
I think this is all minutia they're throwing at the wall here.
All I'm suggesting, these are complicated legal questions that we don't have answers to.
I like to, like, if we have this information at the time, we would have done the stormwater analysis. We would have sent it out for peer review. They would have come back with their concerns. I'd like to open it up and do it from that point of time with the information we now have available to find out what we would require through this special permit process and if that would be different. That's what I would like to know, so I am comfortable with what, how we proceeded as a board to approve that. Trust me, Paul, like, I voted against this project to begin with, right? I'm not in favor of this.
And I voted for it, and I wouldn't at this point.
But I still think, I'd like to understand how this project would be different if we knew that piece of information and what we would have required. So that's what I would recommend, this board, open the public hearing. Us go through that technical piece of whatever, whoever does that technical piece that we asked for them to do from our perspective. And then we go down, I think we need to do the due diligence, and that's what I'd like to see, because I'm not comfortable right now waiting. I'm sorry, I'm just not.
I have a question for council. Procedurally, when does the, when within the process does the determination that it's materially subject to the Aquifer Protection happen? Is it a review of the bylaw based upon the issues that are known? Or do you have to actually open the hearing to gather more information to make that determination?
I think it can be either. I think you can make that determination as a threshold determination before opening a public hearing. Or you can simply notice a public hearing and develop that as you go through that process. But certainly, before you complete the process and make any decision, you want to make sure that the information that you have supports whatever conclusions you're going to reach. And I would caution the board against simply deciding that they want to rescind this because they feel like this applicant has done something improper. Because, again, as I've noted, although I believe you have the right to rescind, it's a legally murky question. And if you act precipitously and simply rescind, and the applicant takes an appeal and is successful in that appeal, you're not going to get the option of then trying to work with them to make the project better and address the issues and concerns that the Aquifer Protection District is intended to protect.
Yeah, on the other hand, they are before Concom, so they still have to, they still have to adhere to Concom. So for me, it's a low, it's a low risk.
Well, but Joel, you've already said tonight that you may have different opinions as to what interests are protected under the Aquifer Protection District as compared to the Wetlands Protection Act.
That's true.
So.
I would risk that. I would risk that.
And this is why I want to have that meeting with the district.
Yeah.
While the planning board and commission are not legally obligated to follow any letter of recommendation, I know that they have information that the planning board and commission do not have that I think is relevant at a high level.
And I would say, at this stage of the proceedings, I think a little bit less formality is better than a little more. I feel as if there's information that is available that can be gathered without opening up hearings and starting a process. I think we ask the questions. Now, it may be in two weeks, we have the information, and then we go from there, and maybe we do decide to open up a hearing.
I was going to say, I don't think we're close.
I don't think we're close, yeah.
To a resolution in terms of the actual fix.
Yep.
So I do think that you have some time where you could continue to gather information and then open up a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Still have them running concurrently so that you're getting a result that actually meshes with whatever the Conservation Commission is doing.
Yeah, yeah.
And I do think, in terms of peer review, you can't really engage peer review yourself until you've opened a public hearing.
Right.
So I do think that will be necessary, although I would recommend using the same peer review that the Conservation Commission is using, because that's going to create problems otherwise.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Doug.
And just to sort of bolster what Paul is saying, and, you know, the discussion that the board has the right to gather information and understand what's going on before they make a decision. I think I have committed to providing you everything, or I'm now committing, we're happy to provide you everything that has been filed with Conservation Commission, with the DEP, all of the documentation back and forth, all the questions that have been raised by citizens, our answers to those questions, the peer review of those answers. And I think it's a great idea that if you have specific questions that you don't feel are going to be answered by the conservation peer reviewers, you know, we're happy to take them. I will tell you right now that my client will respond to them. And we will even have agreed to allow Beta to review our answers to your questions so that you have all of the information to decide what you want to do. You know, we're not going to make you open a public hearing before we'll respond to any of those questions or that will give you any information. We're going to do it now. I mean, just give me a list of the questions, the specific questions you have that relate to issues, you know, concerning the Aquifer Protection, and we will have our LSP answer them, and we will have Beta peer review them for you.
Okay.
You know, we want to participate here. It's just that, you know, I'm getting this overriding feel that, you know, you know, we're being punished because there's a perception that we did something wrong. And I can assure you, I can establish with Town Council that my clients did not withhold anything or did anything that they were legally required or allowed to disclose. I will be happy to establish that with Town Council. Obviously, that is some, you know, private information that, you know, we don't need to share with everyone, but we're happy to share it with Town Council so that he can report to the board whether in fact there appears to have been a, this, you know, that we withheld information that we were required or allowed to disclose. And also, I do want to mention, you know, we too are concerned about the Act for Protection Permit and that, you know, it's likely that we are going to have to change our stormwater system in order to meet the Conservation and DEP concerns over, you know, contaminated groundwater. And so, you know, we will be, we will get to the bottom of every question that both this board and the Conscom has. And again, we're willing to keep, you know, involved with you and take your questions and do everything. If you want to call a hearing and rescind our permit in order to get that information, well then, you know, obviously, my client will have to deal with that under the law and, you know, do what they need to do. The one thing I also want to throw out there, because I know everyone has very great concerns about the Aquifer, my understanding, and Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do understand that initial discussions with the Center Water District is that this contamination in this groundwater will in fact not impact their wells, that it's flowing away from the wells. So, again, contamination that we had nothing to do with, that we're a victim of as well, that's passing under our property, fortunately, at least from what we've received so far, is not a danger to the district's wells. So that's great news for all of us.
Yeah, just to add to that, that's based on initial discussions with the Water Department.
Which Water Department?
Center Water.
With Center? The wells that are down gradient, are those center wells or are those east Chelmsford?
To my knowledge, they're center wells.
The ones south in Canal Street?
Yeah. So, and I am, so as Evan.
It is Center?
So the area is serviced by East Water, but the wells that are located in the area, to my knowledge, are Center Water.
The two northern wells at Riverneck, at Canal Street, I believe, at East Chelmsford. The southern wells are Center Chelmsford, Center Water.
Right, right.
But I'm talking about, I'm talking about the ones, the northern ones.
Across.
Those are east.
Those are the ones, from my understanding, are down gradient.
Right, so as.
Those are not Center District wells.
As Evan was alluding to, I plan on setting up meetings with both East Water, because they service the site, as well as Center Water, because they have wells within area or general area of the site.
That's the way it's flowing.
It's.
It depends on who you ask.
Yeah.
Can we?
But that's the crux of the meeting next week.
Right.
That there is relevant information.
Well, I grew up there. That's the way it flows.
Yeah, can we make an action plan?
I know the lot of ways.
Can we make an action plan, like the, okay, first of all, are we going to have this meeting next week or whenever it is?
I mean, what I'd like you to, what I'd like the chair to do, or the board, be able to designate two members.
Right, do we agree with the designation of Chris and Joel to be the representatives of the planning board to that meeting? Or that working group, or whatever we want to call it?
I do.
Okay. Do you agree?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody opposed?
I don't.
You don't?
Just kidding.
So I will work, starting tomorrow, work with Joel and Chris, make sure they are available, ideally during a daytime, Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
Okay. And then, can we make a target before, like, next Friday? Or maybe that's too aggressive of a timeline to try and organize a list of questions that we have?
Yeah, I had offered to draft a list of questions with material relevance as well.
Okay.
So I can provide that, it's today, Wednesday, I can provide that early next week.
And then, material relevance based on your opinion or based on a legal opinion?
Obviously, based on my, obviously, based on my opinion.
It's all opinion.
But that's.
I mean, I'm interested in the legal relevance.
Well, I would provide that as input to Paul, and then Paul can assess just how good it is.
Okay.
And the peer review is being done by the Conservation Commission?
Well, we'll have the peer review maybe look into whether, you know, hopefully, they can address our questions as well.
Well, no, Deirdre, we cannot do that without the public hearing.
No, no, well.
Is that, yeah, that was my question to Paul. Do we need to do that?
Paul said we could be gathering information without having a public hearing.
Well, you would have to run everything through the Conservation Commission.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I don't want to do.
But I thought Doug voluntarily said that they'd be willing to have the planning board's list of questions reviewed. Whether that's part of the commission process or just something independent, can that be, the attorney's agreeing to do that?
Well, yes, and in the same vein that we have answered all of the questions provided by Ms. Luna, we've provided answers, and we've also agreed to allow those questions and our answers to be peer reviewed by Beta. I'm sure my client would be more than willing to allow this board's comments that you, again, I guess, as Paul is suggesting, technically, you would send to the Conservation Commission and ask them to, you know, distribute them to us and have our answers peer reviewed. I don't see why the commission would not agree to that. They're doing that for public questions. They would certainly do it for questions of your planning board. And again, we're not going to fight that. We're not going to suggest that you have no right to ask those questions because you haven't opened a public hearing.
And to Anita's point, I'd lay for those questions to be, you know, kind of what we would have done differently had we had this information in terms of, I guess, the storm, you know, the infiltration system, the groundwater, the stormwater.
The downside of that approach is that ordinarily, in a public hearing, your peer review then provides you their response back, and then you have an opportunity to, for board members, to interact with both the applicant and the peer reviewer. And we would not have that opportunity in that scheme.
And given the stakes of this process, I would like to have this process be more formal than less formal and follow a public hearing process in order to gather all of this information. I would not want to go through the Conservation Commission for this.
Well, you know, the implication of a public hearing is that the broad public actually has something to say on this. And I know they have a lot of concern, but we're talking about fairly tactical information. Joel understands it pretty well. You understand some of it. I have some vague sense of what's going on. But this isn't a situation where we need, I believe, where we need to gather broad information. There are a lot of opinions out there, but we're not looking for opinions. We're looking for data.
I want our peer review to look at it from a planning board's perspective.
Yes, I think that's an absolutely fair question.
Did you not say, correct me if I'm wrong, that in order for us to do that, we need to convey a public hearing?
I'm not so sure that you.
It's certainly quite unusual for there to be a peer review when there is no public hearing open. I don't know that there's necessarily a prohibition against that, and it sounds as though the applicant would be willing to fund that peer review. I do recommend that the planning board execute its own 53G account for its own separate peer review so that all questions can come directly from the planning board to the applicant without having the Conservation Commission acting as an intermediary.
Thank you.
And I would like the opportunity to interact with that, that peer reviewer. I would also like the opportunity to hear, outside of that initial meeting next week, have that discussion with the water districts. And to have that done outside of a public hearing format is just odd. I think the level of interaction, to me, requires a public hearing.
Just on the district, I'm not sure you're going to get individual district commissioners or superintendents to come to a planning board meeting. No different than the initial suggestion through the policy discussion about the planning board being able to request department heads to come to a meeting to talk about complex projects. It's never happened, and I don't think it ever will happen.
And we also discussed in our policies document that we wouldn't, I mean, in the public hearing process, it is discussed that if you have questions of the applicant after the hearing is closed, that you have to reopen the public hearing. And I think we should follow our own policies and procedures to open a public hearing, to have these questions answered by peer reviewers, by even, I'm sure the Conservation Commission members might be interested in attending to get some information from them, so.
I think just the nature of the issue is one of great public concern. And I think to conduct this in a way in which the public is not allowed to comment just seems incongruous, in my mind.
So let me clarify, there's nothing that prevents you from accepting public comment during an administrative agenda item. That is not something that's forbidden. You have every right to do that. The question is, you know, do you open a formally noticed? The question is, you know, do you open a formally noticed public hearing which presumes as a result that you're going to take some sort of action?
Right.
Which I just, I don't know that you're at the point where you can make that determination yet.
Well, why would we go through a process of gathering information to determine...
We are at that point.
Whether to open a public hearing and then gather more information? The whole point of a public hearing is to gather information, so it feels weird that we would gather information to open a public hearing to gather information to make a decision.
Well, again, you've got to recognize that this is a very unusual circumstance, and it is something that should be taken, you know, with extreme caution to actually try to look back and reopen a decision that's already been issued. The cases that have indicated that there is potentially a right to do that have also indicated that you've got to be very careful.
All right. And I think we should gather more information before we decide to open a public hearing.
But careful in rescinding the decision, not careful in opening the public hearing to determine whether to rescind the decision, right?
Yes, that is what those decisions state, but again, if you are noticing a hearing, there is a presumption that there will be some form of action as a result.
But that action may, we may agree to, and we may all be happy with.
Which is fine.
Like, doesn't mean that we're going to rescind it, it just means...
It will be a vote, it will be put to the board.
But it means that, like, we may say, something may come up, and I don't know, like, we changed, I don't know, like, whatever, a foot here or something like that, and they agree, yeah, right, we should do that.
And if that's the result, there's...
That would be the result, that's what I'm saying. Like, I think we need a public hearing opened so we can have these open discussions about whether it's something that makes sense for them, makes sense for us, we're all happy, the public's all happy, we've covered all the bases, and the project can continue. I'm not saying that we would rescind it, I'm just saying, like, I think we need the process opened so we can have these discussions.
And at the end of the public hearing, I'd be happy to vote to not rescind it as the action.
Right.
All I was suggesting, if you're going to open a public hearing, you should have a, you should already have identified the specific reason for it. In order to identify the specific reason for it, in my opinion, you should, you should have already pre-qualified that it's material to the special permit you issued. I don't believe you've done that yet.
I agree.
I agree.
There's no, just because one member has done the analysis doesn't mean that the full board agrees. It also doesn't mean that there's, that there's legal cover.
Rational.
That supports that.
We can figure that out later.
How about we figure that out first? How about we meet with the water, have our representatives meet with the water, we gather our list of questions that are meant to determine whether we are on firm basis in looking at this. And then, once we determine that we're on firm basis in looking at this, then we'll look at it with a public hearing.
I agree with that.
Couldn't we ask questions for CONCOM?
Yes, or we can ask questions for peer review ourselves. I'm satisfied now.
Just compile a full list of all the questions, and then we'll figure out who they need to be asked of.
I also would like for Doug to meet with Paul and discuss the timeline so we can get an independent verification on whether there was material withholding of information for us.
Happy to do that.
Great.
Okay, can we adopt that as an action plan, and can I have a motion?
So moved.
What's the motion?
Joel's doing something?
Make a motion, Joel's doing something.
There's a meeting, there's a meeting next...
There's a meeting between those two guys.
There's a meeting next week to be attended by a number of stakeholders with Joel and Chris.
As the planning board designees.
As the planning board designees, coming back and reporting to us on the findings at our next meeting. Meanwhile, we will be gathering a list of questions meant to determine whether we're on firm legal standing in looking at rescinding this decision.
Or even reopening, revisiting.
Or reopening a public hearing. I think concurrently, we should have a list of questions regarding peer review as it pertains to stormwater aquifer protection.
Whatever it may be.
That would go to CONCOM.
No, that have to do with our...
As Joel said, some of these questions may be CONCOM-related, some may be completely independent of the CONCOM.
It would go to what we would assess in terms of making a decision with this new piece of information. And then also, Doug and Paul are going to meet to discuss the timeline.
We don't need a motion for any of this, right?
What was that?
We don't need a motion, she just, that's our agenda items, right?
Yes, you don't need a motion, this isn't a public hearing.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Let's do it. Hallelujah.
Where's the agenda?
All set?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
We asked about campus development, but I think that's...
Want to just speak quickly, too? If Paul's here?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I do hope you know that we're here to work with you on this, we'll get it resolved.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay.
So, as you recall, so Paul's going to just speak very quickly on his review of the UMass West development agreement?
Oh, yeah.
This came up at your last meeting.
Right, I forgot.
So, I did review it, and I had the recollection that we had addressed this in the development agreement, and we did. We made the property owner a signatory to the development agreement, so they're bound by it, so anybody who wants to do anything on that property has to follow what's in the development agreement irrespective of, you know, what subsequent zoning changes may occur.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That it?
That's it.
All right, have a good night.
Do we have anything for, sorry, go on.
So, can we ask, no, I'm not going to ask him that question, but, so based off of that, remember we talked about areas that you should not be putting part of that, on the MBTA zoning?
I don't know.
I don't think there's anything inconsistent there.
But if the owners have to stick with what's being built there now, then we're going to put an overlay over it, wouldn't it go against what the gentleman from NCOM said that you can't make these things? You can't put in an area that...
Has that restriction.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a zoning restriction.
It's not a zoning restriction.
Right.
It isn't?
But would it classify as our area that we're looking at?
The development agreement is a side agreement outside of zoning.
Yeah, because there's no restriction on the zoning. It's an agreement, it's an agreement that's made on the property.
If someone goes to the zoning map or the zoning bylaw, that property is designated as UMass West multifamily overlay district.
Right.
And as Paul Havert is indicating...
So, it has to stick with the agreement.
The development agreement runs with the land.
Right.
Regardless of what existing zoning or...
So, my point is, if we put that as part of the square footages for the overlay, it goes against things we talked about earlier, put in areas that would never be built.
No, the development agreement...
Couldn't change, can't change.
But it's, it's, it's still, it's still high, it's still medium to high density.
Okay.
It's not necessarily compliant with MBTA zoning, but again, what you, what, if UMass West is included in the town meeting vote...
Yeah.
Then it's compliant with MBTA zoning.
Okay.
And that appears to be what the state is interested in.
They wouldn't dig deep enough to find...
Okay. Okay, zoning work session?
I don't know if you want to begin that tonight, but you had put that on tonight's agenda specifically to begin discussions. Planning board should review the goals and objectives of the overlay districts and the inclusionary zoning bylaw every two years to determine if updates need to be made. That was the primary item. Secondary item was 2.5 of the matrix, should conduct a townwide analysis of the zoning map and ground conditions in order to eliminate land use conflicts between residential, commercial, and industrial uses. So, I think the primary one that the board wanted to begin was the review of the overlays.
The districts?
Yeah.
I think that, I don't think we should start that now.
No, it's a little late.
I didn't do my homework. So, just moving forward, because I know we're closing up, as I mentioned, your meeting on the 13th will be busy. Just give you the list of items. MBTA zoning will be back on it. There's a six lot definitive subdivision off of Hildreth.
I'm sorry, the MBTA zoning?
We'll have an update.
Is Mike going to be here?
He may or may not be, but at least we'll have some updates from him.
There will be something?
Yeah, yeah.
Will he have the visualizations then?
If they have them, we'll have, we'll ask him to provide them to us, but at a minimum, we'll have their, his response on the mixed use, and then we'll be able to figure out the schedule moving forward. So, definitive subdivision off of Hildreth, three meeting house will be back in front of you for their formal public hearing. We'll be presumably opening the public hearing for Littleton Road, and 93 Brick Hill Road will be opening, that hearing will be opening as well.
Okay, so maybe we should, I mean, we're, if we're not going to do those public neighborhood presentations, we don't have as much of a busy dance card in the early part of the month, even though that meeting sounds pretty loaded, but maybe we should start a little early, and, I mean, do you think we could go at 6:30 and do, or even, yeah, 6:30 and do half an hour, 45 minutes of zoning work session, maybe attack one of the overlay districts, and then start the general meeting at 7:30? Or do you think that's too late for that agenda? Evan?
I think starting the regular meeting at 7:30, we'll be here a little while, there's nothing preventing the chair and the board from managing the agenda items. What I mean by that is, just because you open a hearing, you can set, we're spending no more than 30 minutes, we're only hearing the initial presentation, we'll ask a couple rounds of questions, and then we're going to continue.
Okay.
So, you have the ability to manage individual agenda items.
Tighten it up, yeah. Okay, let's do that.
So, for that meeting, whichever overlay we want to tackle, can we have the information attached to the agenda?
Yeah. I would suggest you start with COID because that's, everything else flows from there.
Perfect.
Okay, so you're doing a 6:30, 7:30 zoning?
Yeah, unless you think 7:15. Can we start a meeting at 7:15?
This is the 6th?
13th.
The 13th. No meeting on the 6th.
7:15 regular meeting.
We can start it on the quarter hour?
Okay.
Let's do that. Okay. Any liaison updates? I have an update that I don't think I can be doing the housing advisory board. It's in the middle of the day on Tuesday, I just cannot be there, turns out, for me. It's live-only meeting in this building, and there's been construction on North Road, and I can't get across town, and so, John, it was proposed to me that, could you go to the meetings when I can't be there, and since I haven't been, I've only been to one?
Yeah, actually, I went to go to one, and it was actually, it was a lack of a quorum, but I could cover that.
Okay, and maybe, maybe I could cover one of your things.
Sure.
I meant to look at the liaison list, maybe we could trade if there's something that you're not committed to. I am interested in that, and I'd like to go, but it's just not a good day and time.
Okay.
Any other true liaison updates?
Well, I will mention that the master plan implementation committee did meet. The two items that we just talked about for zoning are, in fact, two of the items on that list for which the planning board is a major interested party. There's a third one we discussed, and I've already mentioned it to Evan, that this MBTA zoning stuff is a significant enough piece that it probably ought to get its own place on the matrix. We also covered open space costs. I don't think there's anything dramatic to report there, and our next meeting is about three months away, so we're progressing well. The planning board has actually addressed, or started addressing, a number of the things that are on our list, so I think we're doing well.
Anyone else liaison?
No major updates from the Conservation Commission. 270, their 270 hearing was continued, and I think the peer review still had to be done or reviewed. There was nothing else of significance, yeah, nothing else of significance.
Chris gave a very nice overview of MBTA communities to the commission.
That was very good.
Yeah, I think that nominates him as the spokesman.
Got the schtick down.
He already had one dry run.
I was like, wow.
He got some questions, too. Fielded a number of questions.
There was some looking around, like, as if you thought someone else might be behind you. I was wondering who that might be. New business, other? Can we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks.